Good morning, good morning, good morning. The time for convening has arrived. Pursued to the proclamation by His Excellency Governor Kemp, the timeframe for convening a special session of the General Assembly has arrived. I hereby call the Senate to order, call the Senate to order. At this time, I will ask all unauthorized personnel to exit the chamber. Secretary will read the proclamation from the Governor's convening a special session of the General Assembly.
A proclamation convening the General Assembly of Georgia in special session, whereas Georgia Constitution Article 5, Section 2, Paragraph 7 grants the Governor the power to convene a special session of the General Assembly stating and thereby limiting its purposes, whereas the regular session of the 2023 General Assembly adjourned, signed it on the morning of March 30th, 2023, and whereas the Governor has determined that certain purposes warrant the convocation of a special session now. Therefore, by virtue of the power and authority conferred upon me by the Constitution of Georgia, I, Brian P. Kemp, Governor of the State of Georgia, do hereby convene the General Assembly of this state in special session on Wednesday and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Thank you, Secretary. It is now time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? Recognize Senator from the 14th. How are you doing, Senator? I'm doing well.
Uh, Mr. President, I move the Senator from the 2nd be excused.
Senator, without objection, Senator from the 2nd is excused. Recognize the Dean of the Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move with unanimous consent that we excuse the Senator from the 2nd.
Without objection, Senator from the 2nd. He couldn't get up here from Savannah today? Huh? Had some work to do, alright, well, good. Well, he's a good man. Recognize Senator from the 33rd for motion.
President, and good morning, y'all. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 34th and also say the Senator from the 37th is here, but his button's not working.
Okay, without objection, Senator from the 34th is excused. Any other motions to excuse? Secretary, oh, Senator from the 51st. Oh, Senator from 37th, I'm sorry. Alright. Now, any other motions? We, Secretary, call the roll. It is now time for the morning devotion. If every Senator could take their seats, and that would be very appreciative. Today's our, the pastor today is, uh, is my pastor, is a dear friend of mine, and he's very familiar to this chamber, and I know he'll bring a good message today, but before that, let's, uh, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as strong. Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and the principles which stand, which will be justice, honor, and courage.
It is, uh, it is my pleasure today to have Dr. Benny Tate of Rock Springs Church here. He is somebody who has been a mentor for me and my pastor, my family's pastor, for the last almost 20 years now, where he's taken a little small country church in Middle Georgia and built it into about an 8,000-member congregation that's, uh, that has, includes a K through 12 school system, as well as ministries throughout Middle Georgia that help so many people. I think the last time we checked, there was, uh, I think it was 32 counties that, uh, that Rock Springs touches in some form or fashion, whether through the school, or the church, or the medical office facility where they provide health care for individuals who don't have it. And it's just really remarkable what has gone on at his church and the, and the, and the structure that they have built there, and it's been because of this man right here. And he, he won't take credit for it, because that's his humble, from his humble beginnings of, uh, the mountains of Tennessee, he won't, you'll never hear him brag on himself, but I can brag on him and tell you that he has done a phenomenal job. He's also recently written a book that each one of you will be receiving from, from me, personally, it's called Unlimited, and, uh, it's just a great, great story and testimony to what kind of a person Dr. Benny Tate is, as well as what kind of congregation he has built, and all the many, many lives that he has touched. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome Dr. Benny Tate.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much, Brother Bird. I tell ya, after that introduction, I'm looking forward to hearing myself, amen? But it's so good to see you, and it's a, it's a real honor to be here. Just out of, just out of curiosity, I wonder how many would say, Pastor Benny, I've never heard you before, never heard you before. Everybody in here's heard me. Well, I'm honored, I'm honored to get to be back and get to speak to you all. I be, I woke up this morning, and I was thinking about a story by a writer by the name of Rudyard Kipling. I was processing what I was gonna say to you all, and Rudyard Kipling was a prolific writer in the late 1800s, early 1900s. He wrote the book The Jungle Book, The Gunga Den, children's books, but won the Nobel, Nobel Prize, I mean, he was just prolific. A cynical journalist was interviewing Rudyard Kipling, and that cynical journalist said this, he said, "Mr. Kipling, it's been estimated that for every word you write, it amounts to a hundred dollars. You receive a hundred dollars for every word you write from your books." And that journalist pulled out a crisp $100 bill, and he said, "Mr. Kipling, give me one of those $100 words." And Rudyard Kipling reached, and he took the $100 bill, and he snatched it out of his hand, and he said, "Thanks." And I was coming today, I wanted to say to you that serve in this body, I simply wanted to say thank you, from, from my heart, thank you for your service for our state. I do believe it's a sacrifice, it's not only a sacrifice for you, but it's a sacrifice for your family. So I do greatly appreciate what you do and your public service, uh, for our great state, the great state of Georgia. I want to share a couple scriptures with you and just speak to you, speak to you briefly. I've written a book called Unlimited. It's a book that the Lieutenant Governor is going to give every one of you, and it's a book on the Holy Spirit. And in Acts, Chapter 2, Verse 1 and 2, this is what God's word says. It says, "And when the day of Pentecost was fully come, they were all in one accord in one place. And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as a rushing mighty wind, and it filled all the house where they were sitting." A sound from heaven, a rushing mighty wind. I, I want to talk to you for just a few moments on a wind from elsewhere, a wind from elsewhere. I read an article about a city in California that was having a pollution problem, and they, they just couldn't deal with the pollution. And they brought in an environmental expert, and he studied and studied, and his team studied and studied, and finally, he came back to the leaders of that, that city, and he said, "After all of our research, there's nothing that can be done with the pollution problem. What you really need is a wind from elsewhere to blow it out into the ocean." I'll tell you what I believe, folks. I believe our state, I believe our nation needs a wind from elsewhere. We need a wind from elsewhere. See, what's always lifted us up has been a wind from elsewhere. In the days, the formative days of this country, when our forefathers were in Independence Hall and couldn't agree on a constitution, Ben Franklin stood up and said, "We need the Father of Lights to illuminate our minds. If a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without God seeing it, can a nation rise without its aid?" In the middle of the Civil, Civil War, when our country was greatly divided, our great leader Abraham Lincoln said, "I've been driven to my knees by an overwhelming conviction that I had nowhere else to go. My wisdom and all about me seemed insufficient in the day." He was saying, "We need a wind from elsewhere." During the, before the D-Day invasion, when Franklin Roosevelt was our president, and he called our country to prayer, and he prayed these words, "God, help us in this hour of great sacrifice." Ladies and gentlemen, I believe our country, I believe our state, we need a wind from elsewhere. We need somebody beyond ourselves. We're not sufficient. Now, on Pentecost, a wind came from elsewhere, and Jerusalem was turned upside down, and transformation took place. And I'm almost finished. If you get finished before I do, just slip out. I'm almost finished, but I begin to process, Senator Kennedy. What were the components that created a wind from elsewhere? There were three components. Component number one was obedience, obedience. Jesus told His disciples, "You go to Jerusalem, and you wait and pray." That's why they experienced a wind from elsewhere. They were obedient. I don't want to be political, but I spent years praying for a governor of this state. I've been here a long time. I'm working on 40 years at my church. And I used to meet with a governor of the state, and I would pray with him, and I, I would say to the governor, "Governor, how can I pray for you?" He would say, "Just pray that I'll be obedient, because if I'll be obedient, it will take care of every other area of my life." What brings a wind from elsewhere is obedience. What brings a wind from elsewhere is oneness, oneness. The Bible says, "They were in one accord in one place." You know, you know, ladies and gentlemen, you know what brings the blessing of God? It's when we seek oneness. When we seek oneness, when we seek unity, that brings the blessing of God, not division, but when we seek unity. My wife and I, this year, will be married 40 years. Somebody said, "Pastor Benny, do you, uh, do you ever argue?" No, but sometimes we have intensive fellowship. We got married, and we decided that divorce was not going to be a part of our vocabulary. Murder is, but divorce is not, amen? We made a covenant, when we got married, we'd never go to bed upset at each other, and in 40 years, we've never gone upset to bed, to bed upset at each other, but now, we've stayed up for two or three days at a time, amen? And I remember one time, we had some intensive fellowship, and I left, and I grabbed my Bible, and I was hunting that scripture, Ephesians 5:22, "Wives submit yourselves unto your own husbands, as unto the Lord." And I didn't find that scripture, sis. I found 1 Peter 3 and 7, that says, "Likewise you husbands dwell with them according to knowledge, giving honor unto the wife as unto the weaker vessel, and being heirs together of the grace of life, that your prayers be not hindered." And I said, "Barbara, if we're gonna have an effective prayer life, we're gonna have to be able to get along, and if you're gonna accomplish something in your house or in the state house, it's because we're able to get along." I'm talking about what brings a wind from elsewhere. Oneness brings a wind from elsewhere. Obedience brings a wind from elsewhere. And then lastly, an obligation to pray brings a wind from elsewhere. You believe what you want to believe, but good things may happen in all our ability, but only great things are gonna happen because we experience a wind from elsewhere. I'm a preacher. A preacher stood up on the Lincoln Memorial when he was 34 years old, and he was only supposed to speak four minutes, but he went over his time. I've probably done that too, Lieutenant Governor. But he went over his time, and after he had spoken for about 10 minutes, he went off the script, he went off the teleprompters, and he said these words. "I have a dream." It was not a part of the script, it was a wind from elsewhere. "I have a dream that one day, in this nation, my four little children will not be judged by the color of their skin, but the, but by the content of their character." This is all I'm here to say. Georgia Senate, I still believe the hope for our state, I still believe the hope for our nation is a wind from elsewhere. Let us pray. Lord, as we bow our heads and our hearts in your presence, I want to thank you for Lieutenant Governor Burt Jones and his family, but Lord, I thank you for the men and women that are in this body. God, we call them politicians, but in Romans, Chapter 13, you call them ministers. And Lord, I pray that you will be with them as they minister, as they serve. Would you be with them, and not only would you be with them, but you, would you be with their families? And God, I pray as they take the book Unlimited, the gift that is a gift in their lives, and every one of them experiences a wind from elsewhere. Now, would you bless them and keep them? Make your face to shine upon them, be gracious to them, lift your countenance upon them. May they experience your peace, for I pray this prayer, in Jesus' name until you come. Amen.
It is now time for the introduction of the Doctor of the Day, and I call on the Senator from the 32nd for those honors.
Thank you. Fell senators, I'd like to introduce you to the Doctor of the Day today, Dr. Kelly DeGraffin Reed. Dr. DeGraffin Reed serves as the Physician Program Director of Appointment her patients and the community on the things they need to be aware of to prevent disease. She believes that our bodies, minds, and relationships all have their effect on our health, and encourages her patients to make time to celebrate their lives. Dr. DeGraffen-Reed is a native of Indiana and the youngest of 11 children, and she decided in the eighth grade that she wanted to be a physician. She graduated from Purdue University with a pharmacy degree, and then went to medical school at Case Western Reserve University and did a residency at Embry University. She joined Kaiser in 2003 and sees patients throughout metro Atlanta. She also is a member of the group's Board of Directors. Outside of the office, Dr. DeGraffen-Reed plays the piano and sings at her church. She's an avid fan of professional football and also has taken up gardening. She's very active in the Medical Association of Georgia, is president of the Medical Institute of Excellence in Medicine, and is on the Board of the Medical Association of Atlanta. Please help me welcome Dr. DeGraffen-Reed.
I first wanted to thank the President for allowing me to be here. I can't be here without the Medical Association of Georgia and my fellow Medical Association of Georgia member, Dr. Kurt Patrick. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you today, and that is due to the Medical Association of Georgia, and to be in the medical room and be enlightened by the spirit of Ms. Julia once again, which I had a hard time finding today because they took the signs off of the walls. So, happy again to be here and to be working for an organization for the last 20 years whose mission is to deliver high-quality health care and affordable health care, and
of the Senate in the special session that we're holding that the governor has called
to improve the health of the communities we serve.
today.
And so I thank you all, senators, and look forward to aligning as you all serve the communities
Secretary will read SR-1 EX related to the rules of the Senate for this special session.
who elected you.
Secretary?
Thank you so much.
Senate Resolution 1 EX by Senator Kennedy the 18th and Senator Gooch the 51st.
All right. Good job.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
A resolution adopting the rules of the Senate for this 2023 special session of the General Assembly of Georgia and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back. Mr. President, I move that SR-1 EX be engrossed at this time.
The Majority Leader has moved that SR-1 EX be engrossed. Is there objection? There is objection. Getting warmed up, good. Make sure those buttons are working, right? Senator Leader, would you like to speak to your motion during engrossment? Briefly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a very typical engrossment vote that we take for special session for the adoption of the rules. I think you'll hear from the Pro Tem in just a few minutes. He will explain the rules. As they are being presented in the resolution, they are pretty much identical to the years past resolutions, and so no need to debate those at this time. We will have time for that at a later time. But, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Senator has yielded. Would the Minority Leader like to speak to the motion?
It's not always a good idea. Probably not a good idea at all to engross our bills. It lessens the chance of improving. There's always an opportunity to improve upon something. It also stamps out the minority party. It makes us less effective. It makes this body less effective when everybody can't have input. So, Mr. President, I disagree, and we'll vote against engrossment, and I encourage the rest of these members to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator has yielded the wells. Any other Senator wish to rise to speak on the motion to engross? No one? So, the question on the motion by the Majority Leader is to engross SR-1 EX. All those in favor of the motion will vote yea; all opposed, nay. Secretary, unlock the machines.
On the motion of the Majority Leader, the ayes are 32, the nays are 22, and this motion has received the appropriate number of votes and is passed. Would the Pro Tem like to speak to the resolution? Recognize the Pro Tems. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. Mr. President, good morning, colleagues. Welcome back for day one of special session. A special time. We're here for a special purpose. Our governor has called us in. It's great to see you all. Look forward to spending time over the next few days as we will do the important business as ordered by the Governor's proclamation. So now is the time where we organize ourselves and provide the framework for conducting the business as this body has done in all special sessions for the past 20 years, regardless of the subject matter of the session for which we're called to gather. Let me walk you through the current posture of the longstanding precedent of the Senate when it comes to specially-called sessions. First, what we have before us is a resolution to adopt the rules recognizing the truncated nature of this special session, just as the other special sessions have been as well. And what I'm proposing is going to make this as seamless as possible by adopting the rules from the 23 session as the rules for this special session, with the necessary changes to, as I alluded to, recognize the quickened timeframe under which we are operating per the federal judge's guidance, and of course, the unique subject matter in the Governor's proclamation that has brought us all here to the Capitol today. Secondly, this should be a familiar exercise for most of us here. Even some of the newer members of the Senate who may have played around in that sandbox across the Capitol hallway over there before joining this upper chamber will likely remember adopting the rules for the most recent 2021 special session. I myself have been through this exercise three times since my constituents began sending me up here to do their work, and the Majority Leader has done this four times, and the esteemed Minority Leader has adopted tailor-made rules for special session and impressive seven times. Now, for the benefit of the members present and to the public at home, I'm going to describe each proposed rule change that's contained in the resolution before you and put it in the light that's necessary for the timeline that we're going to operate for special session. It's also, I will also note, that each time the rule I'm describing was previously adopted over the past two decades during our previous special sessions to hopefully avoid any confusion about this precedent. So, at the top of the resolution you have, you'll see that for the purpose of this special session, we will adopt the rules that we previously adopted in the 2023 biennium, and we'll also update those that's necessary to recognize, as I said, the shortened time for special session as well as the unique purpose for which we're all here today. So, let's look at Section 1 of the resolution, Rule 2-8.3. This rule eliminates the required minimum length of time for consideration of a conference committee report. It varies based on the day of the session, of course, in which the report is filed, but maintains the two-hour minimum unless the majority vote is suspended on that requirement. Section 2 of the resolution deals with Rule 2-8.4 concerning the discharge of conferees. This rule simply reduces the time in which conference committee conferees have to agree on the bill that is the subject of the conference. You all recognize from the rules that normally a conference committee has five days to reach an agreement, and this rule reduces that time to 24 hours, again recognizing the nature of the time we're here and what we're doing. Rule 3-1.2 regarding introduction of bills. This rule provides an exception to the standard requirement that bills be filed the previous business day to allow redistricting bills for Senate, House, and Congress to be introduced on day one of session. Rule or section number 4 comes from Rule 4-2.6 regarding the order for second reading. This rule requires the second reading to occur on the same day that the committee report on such bill is reported. As you all recognize from our practice, normally the rule requires that the second reading of a bill occur on the legislative day following the committee report being reported, but this rule change saves the Senate a day in its consideration of the bills. Section 5 is Rule 4-2.9b, which allows the Rules Committee to set the calendar beginning day one of session, again just for efficiency purposes. Day 6, Rule 4-2.13. This rule means that bills passed by the Senate will be immediately transmitted to the House. Section 7 deals with Rule 6-7.1 concerning a motion or a notice for a motion to reconsider. This rule allows for a motion to reconsider that's made immediately after we've all taken action on the bill. Section 8, Rule 6-7.5, allows for a reconsidered bill to be brought up again the same day it was considered or reconsidered. What we're accustomed to is a reconsidered bill going either to the Rules Calendar or back to the Rules Committee. And then finally, the last proposed rule change is Section 9, Rule 7-1.6, says and requires that the appropriate maps, population data, and demographic data must accompany any amendment to a redistricting bill. This is simply to ensure that those of us voting on these important changes have all the data and have a complete plan of what each change of a proposed redistricting bill would do. So, to sum up those rules that we'll be adopting for this year's session, I want to especially thank the leadership of the minority party and their counsel for discussing these rules. I had transmitted these proposed rules to the Minority Leader about a week ahead of us gathering here today as a courtesy, and I appreciate her review. And in fact, based on that discussion, we discovered that there was a rule that had been included in what was being proposed that we actually had not adopted in 2021, but we had adopted in previous special sessions, and it was meant to provide simply clarity, but it's not necessary and quite frankly, superfluous at this point. So, when it may have actually have had the opposite effect of what we were looking for with regard to the section that we removed. So I thank the minority leadership for your time and having our office take a second look at these rules. With that, Mr. President, I'm happy to answer any questions.
There are no questions, Senator. Thank you. Senator has yielded the well. Just a quick point. I know a couple of people have asked about points of personal privilege. We are going to do points of personal privilege after we get finished with this official resolutions and things of that nature, so there will be an opportunity. I know several of the members here were asking about because they wanted to come say, have an opportunity to speak to the chamber on some points of personal privilege. So we will have those, but it will be after these procedural things that we've got to do. So, if that answers everybody's question, I hope so. If it doesn't, come back up here and ask. So, all right. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the resolution proposed by the Pro Tem? Without objection. Is there objection for the previous question being ordered? Chair here is none, and the previous question is ordered. Question is on the adoption of SR-1 EX. All those in favor of the resolution will vote yea; all those opposed, nay. Secretary, unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution, the ayes are 32 and the nays are 22, and SR-1 EX is adopted. The next organizing resolution we have is SR-2 EX. Secretary, read the caption.
Senate Resolution 2 EX by Senator Kennedy the 18th. A resolution to notify the House of Representatives that the Senate has convened and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Does the Pro Tem wish to speak to the measure? Senator waves. Any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? Without objection. Does any Senator, the question on the adoption of the resolution, does any other Senator object to the adoption of the resolution? Without objection, the resolution is passed. Is adopted, excuse me. The next organization is SR-3 EX. Secretary, read the caption.
Senate Resolution 3 EX by Senator Kennedy the 18th. A resolution to notify the Governor that the General Assembly has convened and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Pro Tem, you wave. Any other Senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? Any Senator to object to the adoption of the resolution? Without objection, the resolution is adopted. Sorry, moment. Now, at this time, I must appoint the following Senators as a committee to notify the Governor that the General Assembly has convened and is ready to do business. I'd like to appoint the Senator from the 18th, the Pro Tem; Senator from the 15th, the Dean of the Senate; Senator from the 51st, the Majority Leader; Senator from the 50th- So, that answers everybody's question, I hope so. If it doesn't, come back up here and ask. So, all right. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the resolution proposed by the Pro Tem? Without objection. Is there objection for the previous question being ordered? Chair here is none and the previous question is ordered. Question is on the adoption of SR1EX. All those in favor of the resolution will vote yea. All those opposed, nay. Secretary on Lightning Machine. On the adoption of resolutions, the ayes are 32 and the nays are 22 and SR1EX is The next organizing resolution we have is SR2EX. Secretary, read the caption.
Senate Resolution 2EX by Senator Kennedy the 18th. A resolution to notify the House of Representatives that the Senate has convened and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Does the Pro Tem wish to speak to the measure? Senator waves. Any other senator wish to speak for or against a measure? Without objection. Does any of Senator, the question on the adoption of the resolution, does any other senator object to the adoption of the resolution? Without objection, the resolution is passed. Is adopted, excuse me. The next organization is SR3EX. Secretary, read the caption.
Senate Resolution 3EX by Senator Kennedy the 18th. A resolution to notify the governor that the General Assembly has convened and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Pro Tem, you wave. Any other senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? Any senator to object to the adoption of the resolution? Without objection, the resolution is adopted. Sorry, bud. Now, at this time, I must appoint the following senators as a committee to notify the governor that the General Assembly has convened and is ready to do business. I'd like to appoint the Senator from the 18th, the Pro Tem, Senator from the 15th, the Dean of the Senate, Senator from the 51st, the Majority Leader, Senator from the 55th, the Minority Leader, Senator from the 8th, and the Senator from the 3rd. Apologize, we said, I said the Senator from the 55th, I meant the Senator from the 50th is what I meant, the floor leader. I would ask that all members of the committee notify and meet with the Secretary of the Senate and the Rotarium immediately upon adjournment. All senators who have bills and resolutions to introduce, please bring them to the secretary's desk. First reading of Senate bills and resolutions, Ms. Secretary.
Senate Bill 1EX by Senator Echols of the 49th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts, to provide for short title, to provide for contingent nature of this act and for circumstances under which it shall or shall not apply according to the enforceability of prior provisions under federal law to provide for the continuation of present senators, to provide for effective date to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes.
Secretary, read the communications from the governor's office.
I apologize for that. The, the bills that were read currently would be put into the reapportionment committee. Now we have a second reading by the secretary.
Senate Bill 2EX by Senator Echols of the 49th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts, to provide for a short title, to provide for contingent nature of this act and for other circumstances under which it shall or shall not apply.
Reapportionment.
Senate Bill 3EX by Senator Echols of the 49th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts.
Reapportionment.
Senate Bill 4EX by Senator Butler of the 55th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts. Mr. President, that, my apologies.
Are there any unanimous consents? Hearing none. Does any senator wish to rise on appointed personal privilege? Senator from the 42nd, do you wish to rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I rise because this week we are laying to rest a true titan and luminary of Georgia as funeral proceedings occur for former, former First Lady Rosalynn Carter. All of Georgia, in fact, many across the world and in our, in our wonderful country are mourning the passing of Rosalynn Carter, such a great and distinguished woman. Mrs. Carter served her state, her country, and her community with the utmost integrity, intellect, commitment, and compassion. She was 96 years old, the second longest living First Lady in American history. And at those, that wonderful old age of 96, I guess we're not surprised that we have to say goodbye. But it does not make her loss less difficult. We feel her loss acutely nonetheless. So I want to take this opportunity to reflect on some of her many accomplishments, both large and small. The world has lost a powerful voice for dignity, equality, and the advancement of humanity, a true doer, a true woman of action. Rosalynn never ran for office herself, but she served as though she were representing everyone, even those outside of the United States. While First Lady, she served as the honorary chairperson of the President's Commission on Mental Health, which led to the signing of the landmark Mental Health Systems Act by President Carter. Her legacy and work will live in perpetuity across the world as the humanitarian mission of the Carter Center, which Mrs. Carter helped birth, continues. This work in democracy building and disease elimination has made the Carter Center one of the most impactful post-presidential endeavors that the country has seen and has helped millions of people. We all marvel that all she did in her long life, her legacy is immeasurable. While her work as First Lady during and after her husband's presidency stands as a testimony to her abilities and character, let's all take a minute and recognize one of her hugest accomplishments is the 77-year marriage and undying love that she and President Carter had for one another, her husband and her soulmate. Yesterday, Glenn Memorial Church at Emory University was filled with dignitaries and President Biden, who came to pay tribute to this giant of a woman. She made a difference in our country in a way that few have. Today, let's take a moment and a moment of silence and recognize the life and work of First Lady, President Rosalynn Carter.
Senators requested that Senate stand in attention and have a moment of silence for the former First Lady.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate you saying that. I know you're dear friends with the Carter family and I will have to say that when I first was elected to the Senate, I was, I was sweetmates with Jason Carter and he and I shared a office together and really had a lot of fun, but one of the things I look back on, I'm so, was so honored, was that he took one day, we were, after we got done with the Senate, we went down to the Carter Center and I had the opportunity and the pleasure of meeting both former president and former First Lady and, and just not just, they're not just great Georgians, great Americans, but they were just great, good, good people. And, and I know, you know, there's a void in former President Jimmy Carter's heart right now and we want to pray for him, but First Lady Carter, she was an unbelievable public servant, had an unbelievable heart, and really cared for individuals for just who they were and wanted, and really was, really was somebody who wanted to help the people who always, you know, looked for them and a testament to what kind of people they were, them rising to the larger, the highest pinnacle in this, in this country, all the way to the White House, but never forgetting about where their roots were in Plains, Georgia, and living in their original home of their hometown, I think speaks volumes to just what kind of character the Carters have. So our thoughts and prayers are with the Carter family and as the Senator from the 42nd stated, we also, lost a very, very special Georgian and, and a very good lady. So thank you for that, Senator. Any other senator wish to rise on appointed personal privilege? Senator from the 53rd.
Mr. President, thank you. I tell you what, for the last three months, I've been calling for a special session. The people in Northwest Georgia, they're going to be mighty excited today because we were in a special session. Mr. President, I called for a special session with such intensity that I was booted out of the Majority Caucus, now a free and independent agent sitting in the back. Mr. President, it's very disgruntling to me that I call for a special session for three months and that we come to this special session and the proclamation that the governor has given us does nothing to address the concerns that millions of Georgians have in our current state of affairs. You see, Mr. President, people in Northwest Georgia, they don't like thieves. And in 2020, people in my district believe the election was stolen. They're upset that the governor took 19 days to certify the election results and if it takes that long, then how can you protest when other people agree that maybe the election was stolen? Mr. President, it's one thing to have a difference of opinion of whether an election was stolen or not, but we're in a much darker side of politics now in our state. Because now if you disagree with the political ruling class, you can be held political prisoner. And right now, we have a former president and 18 others, even a member of this body, who are facing the rest of their life in prison for questioning an election. Mr. President, we have God-given rights, given to us by God. It's protected by the First Amendment. But, Mr. President, the biggest constitutional crisis that our country has ever seen, as the entire world watches our state, we find ourselves in special session and nothing can be done by order of the governor to address these concerns. I was refreshed to hear your pastor, Mr. President, talk about a breath of fresh air because I think this Senate, I think the Georgia legislature has become stagnant. You know, there's no moderation when we rubber stamp things. Mr. President, I pray for this Senate, I pray for this legislature because we are in a dark time in our society and in our state. Mr. President, if there is injustice in a map, while there's been a promo call for a special session of, a Democrat-appointed judge can say special session and by George, we got one. But, Mr. President, if our maps are racist, then let's bring justice to our maps, but let's also bring justice to a stolen election. Let's also bring justice to the 19 individuals who are facing the rest of their life in prison. And I yield back, Mr. President. Thank you.
Senator recognizes the, recognizes the Senator from the 41st on appointed personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Friends, as you know, the reason why we have gathered today at great additional taxpayer expense is because when the General Assembly met in 2021, Republicans, my colleagues, passed legislative and congressional maps that discriminated against black voters. In that special session, we, we Democrats, we pleaded with Republicans to acknowledge that all of the growth in Georgia's population over the preceding decade had been driven by residents of color and to have new maps that reflected that reality. Unfortunately, our pleas were ignored. Democratic-proposed maps for fair maps that complied with the Voting Rights Act, they were flat-out rejected, didn't even get to the floor. Instead, in 2021, Republicans passed maps that sought to cement political power from the coming decade at the expense of minority voters. You don't have to take my word for it. A federal judge in a comprehensive 516-page order found that the state legislative and congressional maps passed in 2021 each violated Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act by diluting the power of black voters and not providing black voters with the opportunity, equal opportunity, to elect the candidates of their own choice. The court even told us exactly where the problems are. They lined out the districts. It's District 10, 16, 17, 25, 28, 30, 34, 35, 43, and 44. These are the specific districts that the enacted plan violate when it comes to the Voting Rights Act. And the court gave us a remedy. They ordered that we create two additional majority-black maps, majority-black districts in South Metro Atlanta. But unfortunately, the Republican-proposed maps, they failed to do what the judge ordered and they fail once again to comply with the Voting Rights Act by continuing to dilute the power of black voters. For those of you who are younger, you know this, TLDR, too long, didn't read. Put simply, we tried to tell you in 2021 and we're telling you now. The maps that the Republicans have proposed dilute the power of black voters once again and the Democratic Caucus maps, where our maps give black voters and black Georgians the voice that they deserve in the voting booth. We told you and we're telling you now again.
Senator has yielded the will. Recognize Senator from the night for appointed personal privilege. The proud mama of the Georgia Tech football player.
That's right. We're going to a bowl.
Who had a moral victory this past weekend.
Number 43.
Had a moral victory. We so proud of him.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I know you're proud of your baby though, so that's all that matters.
I am so proud of my baby, Noah Collins, number 43. All right. Good morning, members. I'm happy to see many of you today. Seems like we, we've been gone such a long time, but we picked right back up where we started. But the reason we're gathered here today is because we have a duty. We have a duty of fixing the mess left by the last Republican drawing map. Despite Democrats, despite advocacy groups, nonpartisan advocacy groups warning our Republican colleagues very loud and clear that the maps that you presented are a Voting Rights Act violation, they pass them through anyway. So now, instead of a real fix, Republicans are trying to sell us on a so-called fair map that's nothing more than smoke and mirrors and does nothing to correct the dilution of minority black votes, of minority votes. And let's call a spade a spade here. The map Senate Republicans dropped is an outright insult to black voters. The map they are presenting blatantly disregards and sidesteps the judge's order to create a fair map for black voters. They're trampling on the Voting Rights Act, taking power away from black folks and basically saying to them, "We don't care about your rights." No. And that's clearly shown in the map that we've been presented with. And we can't turn a blind eye to the stark reality unfolding in South Atlanta. Large majority-black communities stood as the most glaring gerrymander and still are on our current 2021 map and disappointingly, it remains unrectified on the proposed map. The new map is still diluting black votes. Let me say this again, the map proposed right today, and you will hear, is still diluting black votes and black voting power. Now, the Republicans are going to brag this week and they're going to talk to you about and try to sell to you, but we created two minority districts, but what they won't spill is that they're robbing black votes from other districts in order to satisfy it. And their only satisfying part of the court order, hoping that we'll all ignore the full scope of what the court actually asked us to do. What about Districts 35 and 16? Pay attention to those this week. And you can't pull the wool over our eyes, outwit the judge, or confuse the public colleagues. Earning votes means playing fair, not playing games with our democracy. If we let the disrespect and disenfranchisement of black voter, of black vote slide, we're turning our backs on the very core of democratic principles. Following directives is one thing, but we have got to uphold the real spirit of democracy, fairness, justice, equal representation. And it's high time for Republicans to step up in good faith, work with us, and deliver maps that truly echo the diverse voices in Georgia and of our Georgia voters. Democracy should never take a backseat to deception and fairness should Democracy should never take a backseat to deception, and fairness should consistently prevail over manipulation that favors one party or one class over the other. The people of Georgia have given us a mandate, they have entrusted us with a mandate. The Democrats actually do have a map that follows the judge's orders. And I ask the public and people in this chamber to take a look and really examine, and let's not find ourselves back in this mess, and we can correct the problem now by collaboratively working together. And let's not betray the trust of the people of Georgia. Mr. President, I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. We're going to pause on the points of personal privilege real quick, because we have an adjournment resolution. But all those that are wanting to do a point of personal privilege, you will be given that opportunity, but I'm going to let the secretary read the adjournment resolution here.
Mr. President, House Resolution Two EX by Representative F. Strachan, one hundred and fourth, a resolution relative to meetings and adjournments of the General Assembly and for other purposes. That completes the orders.
Thank you, Secretary. Majority Leader, speak to the resolution.
Mr. President, colleagues, H.R. Two EX is the adjournment resolution that's passed by the House. You have a copy on your desk. It's pretty straightforward. Part One, lines three through six spells out that we will be in session through this Friday, and then we'll reconvene on Monday morning. We will set the times to each of those days at the end of session each day, like we typically do. Section Two of the resolution deals with, in the case of an emergency or disaster declared by the governor and not declared by the governor, then the House Speaker and the President of the Senate will declare a location suitable for us to meet. So this is straightforward, typical, standard language that we do in each of our special sessions and the adjournment resolutions. So therefore, I yield the will. There's no questions.
You have no questions, Senator. Any other senator wish to speak for or against the measure? Chair hearing, none. Is there objection to the previous question being ordered? Chair hearing, none. Previous question is ordered, and those in favor of the resolution will vote yea, those opposed, nay. Secretary, unlock the machine. Fifty-one, the nays are zero, and this resolution has received a requisite constitutional majority, and is therefore adopted. Back to our points of personal privilege, we've got a new senator from the, from the fifth, I think, over there, seventh, I think. We've got a new name over here, Senator from the seventh. You've got a different name listed here. Something happened over the summer? Looks like you're happy about it, too. Congratulations. All right. Bring that enthusiasm to the well here, because it's your time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The right to vote is the most fundamental right that exists in any democracy. It is the power at the very heart of our system of government. Since Reconstruction, millions of Black Americans have fought tirelessly to exercise and protect their right to vote, as members of their government have dreamt up nefarious waves of preventing them from exercising that fundamental right. That is especially true here in Georgia. In our state, there is a long and painful history of people being harassed, beaten, and sometimes killed for trying to exercise their right. In recent decades, since the passage of the Voting Rights Act, we have made tremendous strides to cast off that shameful legacy of racism and voter suppression. However, my colleagues on the other side of the aisle introduced a proposal for new Senate district maps that once again confirmed that the shameful legacy of voter suppression is alive and well in Georgia. Despite being ordered by a federal judge to create fair maps to increase political opportunities of the Black majority area surrounding Atlanta, my Republican colleagues chose to play shell game with Black voters. Essentially, the new proposal does nothing to improve the voting power of Black voters in the areas in which the court found the Voting Rights Act violations. To mask this failure, the Republican proposal consolidates Black voters in the core of Metro Atlanta, where the court did not find any existing voting rights violations. But this does not comply with the court's order. Rather, it ignores the court's finding on the dilution of Black voting power. The racial discrimination still exists. These proposed maps violate the judge's order and should be discarded in favor of maps, the Senate Democratic maps, that allow for better Black representation and help us move away from the legacy of Jim Crow. We cannot continue to repeat the sin of the past. Thank you.
Recognize the senator from the eighth for appointed personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as a senator from the twenty-sixth, my friend always says you can't take politics out of politics, but I want to talk about people just a minute. As many of y'all know, my mom and I went on a trip to the Holy Land, landed in, flew out on a Thursday, landed on a Friday, landed in Tel Aviv on a Friday, and the war broke out on Saturday. And it was quite an experience. And so needless to say, the Israeli government was pretty good to me. They found out that I was there, and they contacted me, and they told me they were worried about my safety, because they said that I was a high-value target. And I laughed, and I said, "Y'all do know that I'm a state senator, not a U.S. senator, right?" And they said, "Well, sir, where you're at, you are indeed a high-value target." But they pinged my cellphone, and they really helped me get to safety, and I'm forever grateful for that, because when we were in Galilee, and I was within throwing rocks from Lebanon, things seemed to be okay. But when we got to Jerusalem, the war came in. I was at Ambassador Hotel, and we could hear the rockets going off, and I could hear machine guns from my balcony, and it was a pretty interesting experience, for sure. It's funny how God works. Senator from the eleventh is one of my oldest and best friends, and he lost his dad about the time I got back from Israel. But when I came back, went to go visit him and visit his dad, and his dad was in Room Five Twelve, in the room that my mother and I were in in Jerusalem. Ambassador Hotel was Five Twelve. It's kind of funny how things work. But when I talk about people, I had Democratic senators, I had Republican senators, all of you that reached out to me. I had Democratic U.S. senators, Republican congressmen, our esteemed Lieutenant Governor, our esteemed Governor, all of them reaching out to me. And really, I think sometimes people would be surprised at just how much we care about each other on an individual level, and I'm forever, forever grateful for that. It means the world to me, and I just can't thank you enough. In light of that, I just want to say, because of my experiences, I've got a lot more friends in the Israeli consulate than I did before. There's going to be a meeting today, the Georgia Israeli Legislative Caucus, and it's an open conversation with Arab Muslims from the Middle East about the Israeli Hamas war. And I'll just finish with this, and y'all know I'm not one to get up here and be hyper-partisan and all that kind of stuff. But the one thing, if I've ever been disheartened in my life, my Israeli guide, who had rockets landing within two hundred yards from his house with his wife and children in it, he stuck with me, and he made sure that I got out of the country. And what I went through, and I was over there on my cellphone, and I could see where there were Americans that were protesting in favor of Hamas, knowing what Hamas would have done to me if they could have got a hold of me. And so to me, it's a very distinct differentiation between those that are attacked and those that are doing the attacking. And I just stand with the people of Israel and thank them for everything that they did for me, and I covered the prayers and kind sentiments you all sent me, and God bless. Mr. President, I yield the will. Oh, by the way, the meeting's going to be today at twelve-thirty in Capitol Room Two Sixteen. I encourage you to come.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize the senator from the forty-fourth for appointed personal privilege.
Good morning, colleagues. I rise today just to speak briefly about the redistricting. We passed maps in 2021, and the court came back and said that those maps violated Section Two of the Voting Rights Act. And those maps still dilute Black voting strength. The court was real specific in saying that the Georgia State Senate must draw two additional majority-Black districts in South Metro area. And then this week, the Republicans sent over a map that did the opposite. We still dilute the Black vote. It said, "Draw two majority-Black districts, South Metro Atlanta." But instead, the Republican map chops up Senate District Forty-four. Not only Forty-four, but Thirty-four, Thirty-five, Ten, and others. That's wrong. The other thing you did was just change the names. For example, the Forty-fourth now will be the Seventeenth. I happen to represent people in the Forty-fourth. These are unfair maps. Over a hundred thousand people will not be able to elect the candidate of choice. You're playing with these numbers. I'm not so worried about my district, but what about the others? The court said, "Provide two additional majority-Black votes, Black districts, in South Metro area." So we need to do that. I guess you all thought that we would sit by and say nothing, but those of us who are Black here know why we were sent here, know that much blood was shed for our right to vote and for Black people to be represented. So we need to stop playing with these numbers and keep these numbers intact, and stop diluting the Black vote, diluting the Black vote. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize the senator from the fourteenth. You wave? Senator from the fourteenth waves. Does any other senator wish to speak on appointed personal privilege? Chair hearing, none. We will move on to privilege resolutions. Senator from the twenty-eighth, are you ready to present your privileged resolution? Secretary will read the caption.
Senate Resolution Four EX by Senator Brass of the twenty-eighth and others, a resolution expressing support for the nation of Israel and the Jewish people, as well as condemning terrorist attacks upon the nation of Israel and antisemitic attacks on speech in the United States and for other purposes. Mr. President, that completes the order.
I recognize the senator from the twenty-eighth to speak to the resolution.
Colleagues, I come before you today to reinforce this Senate and this state's commitment to Israel and our Jewish community. I present to you Senate Resolution Four EX. The Jewish community is a vital part of this state, and this state enjoys a special connection to the nation of Israel. Georgia proudly serves as the home of the Israeli Consul General to the southeastern United States, and we will continue that partnership and that support. As we heard from our colleague from the eighth, the October seventh attacks on Israel by Hamas marked another sad chapter in the history of antisemitism and hate directed towards Israel. We've all been impacted by these horrific attacks launched that morning and in the events continued today. Our hearts go out to those who lost loved ones in Hamas's unprovoked attack on Israel and those who remain concerned for friends and family who remain today in harm's way. Along with this horrendous event, we have seen a wave of antisemitic rhetoric spreading across our nation and the world. This is unacceptable, and we cannot stand by and let this hatred and hostile way of thinking continue, especially in our universities and places of higher learning. Today and every day, the Georgia Senate stands with Israel. I ask you to stand with me, stand with her people, and all of our friends in the Jewish community across this great state, the U.S. and the world. And let us also speak clearly, the attacks by Hamas were not justified, and Israel has every right, every right, to defend its land and to defend its people. And I stand with them, and I hope you'll stand with me as well. Today, it is also my privilege to stand with our Lieutenant Governor and all of you as we encourage strong and sustained efforts by Congress, the President of the United States, and other world leaders to support and defend Israel and the Jewish people. We urge our leaders at the federal level to continue our country's military and diplomatic support for Israel. We must stand for truth, and the truth remains, they need and deserve our support. Please join me in a moment of silence for all those who have been lost to these horrific attacks and the battle that continues today, and all, and I mean all, who have been impacted by these unfortunate events.
Moment of silence for the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate you bringing that resolution forward. No question, we need to have unapologetic support of our friends and allies there in Israel. Does any other senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? Senator, the minority leader, Senator from the fifty-fifth.
Inquire, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Parliamentary inquiry.
What's your inquiry?
At the proper time, I'd like to make a motion to agree to this resolution by unanimous consent.
The senator is entitled to that. Does any other senator wish to speak for or against the measure? Chair hears none. Is there objection to the previous question being ordered? You object to the motion? All right. She hadn't made the motion yet.
She asked if you could.
At the appropriate time. Does no other senator wish to speak? Now is the appropriate time, Senator, to make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that this body agree to this resolution by unanimous consent.
You object to the motion? All right. Senators moved, make a motion to have unanimous consent. There's objection. All those in favor?
Moving the ayes and nays. Five seconds.
All those in favor of the motion signify by a show of hands. All those opposed? We'll just put it on the board. All those in favor of the motion by the minority leader, vote yea. All those opposed, nay. To the motion moved by the senator from the fifty-fifth. Secretary, unlock the machine. Senator from the forty-sixth, for what purpose do you rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that by voting green on this, this body would demonstrate that we would be unanimously supporting our ally, Israel, and that a no vote is against that?
The senator is correct. If everybody votes yes, everybody would be in agreement. I don't think you're going to have that. On the unanimous, the motion for unanimous consent, the yays are seventeen and the nays are thirty-two, and this motion has failed. We now move for the previous question to be ordered on the resolution, underlying resolution itself, authored by the Rules Chairman from the twenty-eighth. All those in favor will vote yea. All those opposed, nay. Secretary, unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution, the yays are forty-six and the nays are zero. And this resolution has received a requisite constitutional majority and therefore is adopted. Are there any other motions to withdraw or recommit? Chair hears none. I recognize the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a motion that will get unanimous support for. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 2:00 P.M. on Thursday, November thirtieth.
The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until 2:00 P.M. on Thursday, November thirtieth. All those in favor of the motion say yea. All those opposed, nay. All those in favor, say yea. All those opposed, no. And the, that's clearly hair of it. This is the first day back. I'm rusty.